Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome everyone to our work session for Remember First. And the public may join us through the Zoom system. The phone number, meeting ID and passcode are on our website also, on our agenda today. First order of business, Chief Clerk Gino Dietrich with our Executive Section.
Good morning, Colonel.
Okay, thank you. And before we start public comments, Susan Smith is here from our engineering department. She has to make a presentation and part of procedure for her mitigation plan.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. As you know, the Planning Office, Emergency Management Agency and the Conservation District are working jointly on an update to the County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is the county's commitment to reducing risk from hazards such as flooding, winter storms, dam failures, hazardous materials incidents and droughts, to name a few. It will be our strategy to prevent loss of life, minimize or avoid property damage to homes and businesses, reduce business interruption and revenue loss, reduce emergency response and recovery costs, and build a sense of place and peace of mind. This is a multi-jurisdictional plan in all 67 municipalities along with other agencies who are invited to participate. As part of this plan update, we will be hosting a virtual public meeting. Community engagement during the hazard mitigation planning process offers a venue for School of County residents, stakeholders and the public to voice concerns and guide decisions as we prepare this update. The virtual public meeting will be the first of a number of opportunities for the public to provide input and comment. The virtual meeting will be held via Zoom on Tuesday, November 14th at 5:30 PM. Information on how to join the meeting can be found on the county's website in the meeting calendar or on the School of County Planning and zoning Facebook page. Those interested in participating may also call the Planning Office at (570) 628-1415 for the meeting information. I've also left flyers in the room here today. On behalf of the Planning Office, Emergency Management Agency and Conservation District, I would like to encourage the public to attend and help us to build a plan to create a safer and more disaster resilient School of County. Thank you for your time.
Susan, just thank you. And just to point out, you've been working on this for how long? The planning on this has been ongoing for quite a few months.
Commissioner, we started in the late spring of this year and will conclude about the same time next year. Then the plan will need to go to FEMA who will review it, and then the plan will need to go to FEMA who will do an approval. Also, any municipality that participates will have to pass a resolution adopting the plan, and then we'll roll into annual updates.
And can you just let the public know how long the plan is good for, how long after this plan is going to take effect for, how many years?
The plan has a five-year life, but we have to start updating before the plan expires.
Great, thank you so much.
Also, I know you worked hard, not, you know, had the world's best response from municipalities. Well, you've reached out, we've reached out. Some have been good, some have pretty still haven't participated yet, right?
Yeah, we've worked pretty hard to get the municipalities to be engaged, and our numbers have gone up, so we're seeing a bit of a turn with our participation levels, but that's just because of the hard work.
And your board includes supervisors?
So there's a core planning team or a steering committee, and that steering committee includes representatives from FEMA calls and community lifelines, so fire, police, EMS, the water authority of School of Municipal, SECO, township supervisors, borough council members, those who represent the disadvantaged population within the School of County, the head school of municipal, school union, by organizations.
Just a, a lot of people put a lot of time in for this. Thank you for your help.
I will say the emphasis on the municipalities, if they don't sign on it, there's a possibility that there is an emergency or whatever they might have, that they might not get the funding. It is a big part of it. It takes a longer trail without signing on it.
That's right. When they participate and approve the plan, they then become eligible for mitigation funding through FEMA, they become more competitive for other types of grant funding, and they also, their bond rating can improve. There's some of the advantages to participating.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Susan? Oh, I thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we have public comment. Anyone want to give public comment today?
George.
Good morning, George. Good morning. My name is George Stenhovich from Palo Alto. Now's the time for the West End of Pennsylvania. You heard this lady talking, please make sure you meet borough or township, whatever is talking to these people, so you get that help. And now I'm going to say about the senior citizens and veterans once again. I'm tired of saying this, but one thing I've noticed since I've been talking, and I hope some senior citizens and veterans are coming to these meetings, is that I got a lot of people that know me now that never knew me because I'm speaking about senior citizens and veterans. And I think if everybody gets on board, this is going to get straightened out. If you just say, "Oh, but they're not going to do anything," that's right, they're not going to do anything. It's time to put a little pressure on these guys so that they help, these senior citizens and veterans. I'm tired of seeing people losing their homes. This reassessment, I don't care what they say, is going to drive our taxes up. I don't care what they say. My taxes go up. I already told Senator Argo, you know, be ready, because if I lose my home, I'm coming to live with you first. I'm coming to live with you, and you won't want who I'm dragging with me, because she'll be twice as hard as I'll ever be. I'm tired of this nonsense. I'm tired of it. It's just going on and on. Next week, people have a voice. If these people aren't doing the job, let's get some people that are, and not just these guys, all over the United States, in our state especially, in our county. We need help. People need help. They're out there hungry, losing their homes. I don't know how I have to stress this point any further than I have, all this year and a half that I've been talking about. I'm tired of hearing excuses, or "I don't have this," or "I can't do that." Well, speak up. You're our voice. These people are our voice out there, and they have to speak up on these subjects. And if they don't, then get rid of them, and get somebody in there that's going to speak up for us. Now it's time for a change, and the change happened yesterday, today or tomorrow. Let's get on board, and I hope you citizens out there that are voting are going to put the right people in, that are going to help us, and help especially the seniors and the veterans that need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give public comment? Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. My name is Lyle Kuzniewski, I'm a citizen of Pottsville. Public contributor. We have Anadarsky who's running for commission because I'm going to talk about Pottsville. We passed laws electrically with health, safety and welfare of the people. The Fourteenth Amendment says that we're all entitled to equal protection under the law, but we don't see that happen in this room or out on the streets of the city of Pottsville. What we have in Pottsville is unequal protection under the law. In Pottsville, the city business manager's job is to oversee the day-to-day operations of the city, which includes zoning laws, codes enforcement, and all the district departments and all the county departments. Everything is done, but that job according to the code. Currently, the people need to know that Pottsville's police force, which was once 40 strong, is now 20, and we will be losing probably two more police officers within this year and probably five more next year. That is a very dangerous situation. The people of Pottsville pay to train the police officers, who after they have been trained, leave to work in Frackville or go to Penn State because they are treated better. Current situation in Pottsville is that City Hall is in lockdown, and it has been locked down. If you want to go into that building, you need to sign in, and someone needs to escort you to the office that you need to go to and to escort you to the door. Because government is no longer by the people, for the people or of the people, it is for the employees, by the employees and of the employees. Because the law was passed, or the ordinance was passed, for the protection of the employees, none of whom, like anybody in this building, have ever been assaulted. But anyway, along with that, we have issues of health, safety and welfare, where again, if you want to see a city that's well-run in School of County, you need to go to Tumaco. Tumaco has basically turned itself around, is a nice model for this county on how to change things. Jonathan Morris, who's running for City Controller, has throughout the course of this summer brought in like a farmer's market. Most every single vendor who came into Pottsville to sell their wares, their groceries and their produce was from Tumaco. I think we need to take a really good look at how Tumaco is turning itself around. That's an extremely important thing. The other cities that are areas that are well-run are Oakesburg and, well, Oakesburg and it's, I'm losing it at the moment because I didn't read about that, but anyway, there is hope. And yes, I concur with George, and I also want to thank Mr. Dunkle, who last week pointed out that, what was it, Mr. Dunkle? Anyway, but the other thing is, why is this court law? Yes, but why is that court law? We have a right to know why that's court law. Are you trying to keep Jeff from?
No, because people were taking pictures of the information in front of him. There was someone took photographs of his paperwork.
Someone took a photograph?
No.
Is that illegal?
I'll talk, I'll talk to you afterward.
Behind closed doors. Behind closed doors.
Behind closed doors. No, that's wrong, sorry, thank you.
Anyone else want to give public comment?
Jeff Dunkle, Palo Alto. Start real quick. I'm glad to see you're campaigning financially for this finely fathered diary, even though it was late again, but the object is everybody else gets timestamped. I'm sure Brad and Mary Jo can confirm that, Rita. Yours is handwritten, and it was only filed yesterday, but it says October 26th. Maybe we can look into that a little further, but I got bigger fish to fry. 911 Center, Mr. Crater's here. From what I understand, 22 overtime shifts last week, 18 so far this week. He was here last week, but he, I guess he got a phone call, he left before he represented for last week, but, this whole county is in crisis mode between senior services, double the case load, sheriff here, he can confirm, he's down to five or six deputies. You stated a couple meetings ago, public safety is your number one priority for the county. You dropped the ball big time there. So now we're going to pay for recruitment thing for HR. If you're not going to increase the wages and give these people a fair shot at paying their bills, they're not going to stay here. It's a joke. Also, last week, George asked for parcels, I gave him the information, I emailed, I confirmed he got it. I got three more parcels again this week. Be nice if you just look into them and let me know why Deb Dash is making all these back door deals. So I'll give you those, George, after the meeting, and if you could add them to the list, I'd appreciate it. Doc Moyles here today. We're going to buy an $80,000 used CAT scan system from California. I hope there's a warranty on it. It's nice to see you in the building for the first time since you've been elected as well. At least you know where it's at now. And the main thing, since we have this screen up here, is there a way that we can get the, there was a letter sent to the county or the commissioners regarding George violating the consent decree. I'd like to know why that wasn't put on the agenda since it was sent, and why your dictator-like ways keeps it off the agenda. That's something the public should know. If there's a fear of public safety because of him being in the building, write that down, George, fear of public safety. That should be brought up at meetings, it should be on the agenda. But like you said, it's my meeting, I'll run it the way I want, I'll put it on the agenda when I want. So I'm asking you, why is that not on the agenda? I would like the agenda reopened and that put on there, and the public know what the letter was that was sent. Next week's election time, of course, last week, oh, you nailed it, nailed it out of the park. Two years, those people have come from the West End. You know, many of them are retired on fixed income, wasting their gas, wasting their time coming here, and all they got from you was a lousy "thank you for your comments." And now all of a sudden, you and Larry want to put a letter together. Really? Can you tell it's election time? That was the biggest political BS that I've ever seen. So now I'm asking you, why is the consent decree letter not made public? If it came from the sheriff, he's here, if it came from Mike Opake, he's here, if it came from Gary Bender, he's here. I'd like to know why it wasn't made public and why you refuse to put it on the agenda. Let the public know. Are you awake, or are you just age training?
Yes, sir, I'm awake.
Okay. I remember clapping your shoulder, it's dark in your mind. Time's up? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your response, Mr. Heatherington.
Mr. Dunkle, can you give Mr. Marshall those papers, please? Thank you.
Anyone else want to give public comment today? Mr. LeWard, good morning.
Good morning. Doug LeWard, you're in the town. Nice you called Mr. Dunkle this week instead of Dunkle, that was a nice, yeah. Couple things, I just looked at this, not that it matters to me, but you're leasing coffers, but it doesn't say from, who it's from, I don't know if that matters, but I don't care either. I came to talk about 911 Center. You have guys down there working 60 hours in four days in the past month, four days. Can you imagine working 60 hours in four days on your farm? How tired you'd be by the fourth day? Those guys are, they're, they have lives in their hands all day long. They came here last week with their evening guy, ask them to sit down and talk. Why can't you sit down and talk? You guys, you and George were down there a couple weeks ago with Watcher and Argo walking around, getting pictures taken. Did anybody sit there and ask them how it's going down there? Did you pull any workers aside, or not? They're pissed off down there. You call in duty at 8 o'clock in the morning, and you call, you can call in later at 8 o'clock at night, and the same guy's answering the phone. Guess what? He missed his daughter's birthday or his wife's anniversary because they get mandated. There's no help. They came here last week, not for more money for themselves, but to pay more money to new people so they, so they don't have to stay there 16 hours a day. How would you like if you had your anniversary today and you got, and you got told at 3 o'clock, you went out for dinner with your wife at 3 o'clock or 2 o'clock, you say, "Sorry, boots, you're staying until 11 o'clock tonight." Or you missed your granddaughter's dance recital or something. Would you like that? Is it fair to them? You think it's fair? Anybody? Just want to stay here, anything? They got to sit there and answer phones. Major incidents last week, there was a three-vehicle wreck on 209. They had five people there. You think one person would handle that whole thing? So probably at least three of them dispatched in helicopters, dispatched in fire, dispatched EMS, dispatched in police. And then God forbid something else was going on, they had to handle that too, after being there maybe 16 hours or 12 hours, and not being home for three or four days, because all they go home and sleep and get up and go right back to work. Because you guys want to just sit down and talk. Go down and call them on the phone, some of the workers, and say, "Hey, how's it going down there? What do you, what do you need? There's equipment down there supposedly that doesn't, hasn't worked in two years, and they can't even find parts, or it's, it's that old." Give the CAT system you guys bought 10 years ago, that still isn't, isn't, or maybe Scott could talk about it. One of you guys campaigned on it years ago, maybe you, George. Did you have a campaign mailer out years ago that could be bought and brought up the 911 Center to modern times? Do you remember that? You guys bought a CAT system years ago, remember that? You do, Gary? It still doesn't work. Here today it says GIS mapping maintenance. Supposedly they can't even get mapping on this thing somehow. I don't know. It's amazing in the world that you could get mapping for anything in seconds, but they can't get that one to work down there. Get them some help, that's, they don't want more money, they want help.
Your time's up.
My time's up. Wow, thanks. Talk to them at least, would you? Because it affects everybody in here, everybody's life.
We actually heard that, okay.
I know you heard it, but do something about it.
Your time's done, sir.
I don't care, my time is done. Hopefully in next week, you sit here and light it up. Hopefully Mary Jo takes you out, Greg will take you out.
You either stop, Mr. LeWard, we're happy to ask for it out, okay? Please stop. Thank you. Anyone else want to give public comment?
Morning, Greg Woolst. So, again, agenda number 10, I think I've talked about this almost every week on here, not being transparent again, removing money around. You know, it's already budgeted for, but why again can we not release the budget forms? They exist. Mr. Boobers tells you guys, the explanation is right at the bottom of the form. I'm sure we all sit, you're like, "Whoa, that'd be nice for us to see the form, be great." Why can we not be transparent on where we're moving money around? It's taxpayer money. So, as Mr. Dunkle stated last week, Mr. Huddington, you and Mr. Vador wrote out that letter, firmly stating that you believe that the NSP should be shut down. Though this week, the county is going to put out a resolution, but essentially, we're now strongly objected. Two citizens can say, "Let's shut it down," but the commissioners can't hold the same tone in their letter that they're going to release with their motion they're going to do. Just throwing wet noodles at the wall, hoping it's going to stick, hoping in a week we're going to survive and be a commissioner for another four years. I don't care, win or lose, something needs to be done for those people on the West End. NSP should be shut down. Why can we not have the same strong wording in our resolution? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to give public comment? If not, we'll move on and.
Mary Jo.
Okay. Good morning, Mary Jo.
Good morning, you're here at the Moss West Broadway. I don't have a lot to say today, because we've been pounding the table for weeks and weeks and weeks. We truly need transparency, we truly need leadership. Leadership is being proactive, it's not being reactive to situations. We just keep responding, reacting after all these months and months and months of people coming forward and expressing the needs that they see we need in this county. We need commissioners who are proactive, not reactive. We need to be transparent. We need a whole structure of running these commissioner meetings where we discuss things in public, not behind the scenes. It's required of sunshine laws, that we discuss and deliberate things that don't have anything to do with contracts or personnel or sensitive issues. We don't discuss. We come here on Wednesdays and we make motions, and then we move, we take action. Where is the discussion in public? That is what we need. That is how we get to the core of serving the people. Look at our, at the information that we push out. Just, just a month ago, I'd say, we approved the budget, it was an addition to the budget, not moving around funds, an addition of $250,000 to pay $450 per hour to train our employees for sexual harassment and retaliation. So how's it going? How much have we spent? How much of that budget has been used to date? It's in the 2023 budget now. Why do we have to keep coming and pulling and asking? We need proactivity, we need full transparency, all through our stimulus fund expenditures. That should have been pushed out on the website. Berks County has that. You go on their website and you'll see stimulus fund spending. It says where those stimulus funds have been spent and how much is left. I've been watching people come and ask and ask and ask, pull, pulling teeth. We don't need that. We need to work together. We need to be proactive. We have to be responsive to the cries from the employees who feel that they're being retaliated against. That is a consent decree that we have to stand by. It's a legal matter. Yes, Laura, there's hope. Yes, there is hope. I am a very positive person, and there is hope, and we will make that change. We will certainly make that change, and we will take the good people in this county, and we will lead and we will move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give a public comment? Okay, see no else, and I'm going to move on to our agenda. We have Scott here from 911. Morning, Mr. Crater.
Morning. Morning, Mr.. I have one item looking for approval next week, pending agreement for maintenance with Edv. Developmental Research Institute of Redlands, California for the maintenance on the GIS mapping. Term will be for one year, January 1 to December 31, 2024, and the cost will be $14,096.
Thanks, Scott. While you're up there, Scott, there's been several comments about the 911 Center, and this is an issue that you have talked to us about, we've been in a lot of consultation about, it's difficult finding people, looking at recruiting, we are having negotiations about what we can do to solve that, those problems, or not turning a blind eye to it, and you're not also. We want to make sure that people understand you are a good leader, you're aware of what's going on, and it's not something you'd like to have happen, but we're trying our best to correct it, okay? You're welcome, sir. Agenda number four, we have Block Grant Program, it's Sharon Love. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sharon.
I have one item, a recommendation that the board approves, an agreement with the Pottsville Parking Authority, Pottsville, for 102 parking permits for Capital Park and Garage, and 14 parking permits for spaces on the 200 block of Moore Boulevard, at a rate of $40 per permit per month, with a contract cap of $57,072 for the period January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024.
Is that an increase or is it still the same?
There is a slight increase in one of the dollar ten per permit.
Is there, these are the only spots that were given to the possible parking authority that you're aware of?
These are for the human services.
Right.
Agencies, if anybody else is.
Okay, there may be additional.
There may be additional.
Okay.
These are for the human services.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, next up, Dr. Hopwell, Elaine Scharr, please. I'm sorry.
Pearl is going to present.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Paul Robertson from Drug and Alcohol. And we are asking for approval of an addendum to GICER framework to increase the cap from $7,500 to $28,500 for fiscal year '23 to '24.
So looking for motion for the GICER framework increase.
So moved.
Other question, roll call.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hopwell?
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Pearl.
Next up, we have Trillou, thank you, Mr. Robles here this morning. Good morning, Pearl.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Pearl.
Pearl Robles, Assistant Administrator, School of County Children. You, today we have three agreements to present for consideration, one with request for a motion. First, we have request for approval of an agreement with Lifespan Family Services of PA, located in Lexington, Pennsylvania for foster care services. Their traditional program with code FC is at a per diem rate of $75.48, and that agreement is for the term July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. We have an agreement with Hick Bear Foundation, Pennsylvania, New Wilmington, for foster care services with per diem rates as follows. Their lower level program, ages 0 to 12, at $77.47. For ages 13 to 21, the per diem rate is $82.75. Their supported foster care program is at $89.06. And their supported young parent program is at $103.34, also for the term July 1, 2023 to June 30 of 2024. Requesting consideration, an agreement with community options incorporated out of Princeton, New Jersey. They offer duly licensed residential and community home for individuals with an intellectual disability or autism services, which are two different categories of licensing, and they offer both at the same location. Per diem rate for that service is $791.31, and this agreement is also for the term July 1, 2023, June 30 of 2024. Finally, today we're requesting a motion on agreement with Dr. June Elcock Messo, Media Pediatrics, Wallingford, Pennsylvania, for child abuse pediatrician consultations and associated medical care services at rate of $250 per hour, and that also is for the term July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024.
Okay, so there's a request here for child abuse. Okay, so there's a request here for child abuse pediatric, I'm sorry, pediatric consultation. They're available services. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robles.
Thanks, Paul.
Next up, we have office senior services, Deanna is here, she's for you.
Good morning. Yeah, there was the mediator.
Good morning, Jan.
Requesting approval of a teacher service contract with accomplished gross care limited of Popsville for personal care services. The rate is $22.19 per hour and the contract cap will remain the same at $24,000. Motion is requested.
Okay, and a request for motion for a teacher service contract with accomplished gross care of Popsville.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And I was wondering if I could make a comment about the service access management contract.
Sure, that'd be fine.
I just wanted to mention, I think there was a misunderstanding of what was perceived about the contract. And it, they are in our office to do the fiscal services for the fiscal officer. We also have another person who is going to be moving to another state, and their services are needed at this critical time. It's not only in our agency, but other agencies across the state are facing these same issues. So that's something I wanted to mention.
And Deanna, that contract is not to exceed that amount.
That is correct.
So if there is somebody that comes in place during that time, that could.
Yes.
We would, we may not need the services of service access and management in the future.
That is correct.
Great.
When you take their two salaries for 2023, it's $126,000 approximately their salary benefits. And for 2024, it would be $132,000.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you, your staff, for the excellent job.
Thanks, the reporter, appreciate that. Next up, we have Daniel Ryan, Civil Deputy Board Administrator.
Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Court Administration for the District Justices. I'm requesting approval of a lease agreement with Cyan Sky Technologies for five replacement copiers for five of our seven district justice offices. The lease would be for a period of 60 months at a rate of $586 per month. That's approximately $117 per copier. These are replacement copiers. Our previous lease was with Frazier, and we're now entering into a lease and requesting an entry into a lease agreement with Cyan Sky Copiers.
Okay, so there's a motion to replace the five copiers for our district managers, district justices, and for, it's a 60-month contract. Is there a motion that?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would not, Amy. Next up, we have Doc Moyle in the Coroner's Office. Morning, Doc.
Good morning. The motion before the Board of Commissioners is to approve the purchase of a UCT scanner that would be used exclusively by the Carner's Department to carry out post-mortem CAT scans. At the present time, we've been using my own CAT scanner over at the Simon Krager Cancer Institute. The proposed new scan will have improved capabilities. For one thing, the motorized couch will have a weight limit of 500 pounds versus the current weight limit of 300 pounds. So we'll be able to investigate heavier patients without open autopsies. Also, it's a third-generation CT scanner that has 16 detectors in it. So the images will be at a higher resolution. The purchase price is just under $80,000, and that includes installation with a 90-day warranty on it. In comparison, the CAT scanner that we're using at present costs $50,000 and another $20,000 to install it. So when you consider 11-year time span, this is a bargain. We have obtained competitive quotations, and other scans are well over $100,000. So I hope that this will pass muster here and be approved.
If there's a motion to purchase a CAT scanner from Radiology Chrologists of San Antonio, California, is there a motion that?
So moved.
Second, I have some questions.
Sure thing, Mr. Hess, go ahead, sir.
On this, now, Doc, this is gonna be the property of the county, correct?
Absolutely. It will not have any other uses other than post-mortem CT scans.
And also, with the purchase of this, this is, your employees are gonna be handling the scans. Perks, there's not gonna be additional charges.
We have two deputies that are actually certified radiographers that are approved by the state to do CAT scans, and they will continue to do that. I, of course, will interpret the CAT scans as part of my salary as county coroner. And I did recently report on our experience with over 2,000 autopsies. Bud, maybe you could show the textbook. It's the edited, that's one of five volumes edited by Dr. Cyril Wecht, who was coroner in Pittsburgh. And I revised Chapter 28, Updating Medical Imaging in the Forensic Sciences. So it is published material.
And also, the placement and everything that's coming in, all that includes all that, the setup and.
The installation.
Installation, everything else, proper installation. And also, there's a small warranty on it, correct?
90 days. Again, over my 40 years in the field, I've found that when you're dealing with linear accelerators, CAT scanners, rather than buy a maintenance contract, you're better off doing time and materials.
But then, again, I just want to make sure, since the county is buying it, again, all of the, the running of the machine, that there's not gonna be incurred any other cost, correct?
Should be no other cost.
Okay.
Talking more little, so the CAT scans that you're doing, they are being used by Dr. Ross, who is the forensic pathologist that we utilize, and he finds use in having that information. Am I correct on that?
He insists on having a CAT scan. We provide him with a desk so that he can review it in the autopsy suite in Dolphin County.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Moyle? Okay, now, thank you, Doc, for your, for your presentation. And we do have a motion that we did approve, right? Okay. I'm sorry, we motioned a second, okay. Other question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have our Director of Director, Paul Boobers. Morning, Paul.
Morning, Paul.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning, I have five budget adjustments I'd like to present. Each budget adjustment has an explanation on the bottom. We're reallocating budgetary authority between line items within respective departmental budget, and we are not increasing overall spending. The first one I'd like to present is on behalf of District Justices for $489. Next one I'd like to present is also on behalf of District Justices for $500. Next one is on behalf of 911 for $810. Next one is on behalf of the District Attorney's Office for $1,000. Last one I'd like to present is on behalf of Public Defender's Office for $16,000. Commissioners, what this represents is due to some ongoing trials and hearings, they have incurred some additional expenses with witness fees that they didn't anticipate. This is their shortfall. They did budget some money, but unfortunately did not budget enough. So they're requesting the transfer so that they can cover some current and anticipated invoices for witnesses.
Okay, so we have a five requests for budgetary adjustments for 2023 by the year. The first one is for the District Courts for $489. The second one's for District Court for $500. A third for the National case, $10. $1,000 to the DA's office, and $16,000 in Public Defender's office. Is there a motion for these five requests?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
I believe you also have a presentation, or the gentleman from PFM?
Commissioners, that is correct. I'd like to just do a brief introduction. Jamie Schlesinger is here as a representative from PFM Financial Advisors. PFM Financial Advisors is a firm that provides financial advisory services to states and local governments, as well as to the healthcare sector, as well as higher education sector. They have offices not only in the state of Pennsylvania, but they also have offices throughout the United States. Today, Jamie is going to give an update on the county finances, as well as talk about the county bond rating.
Could you pass that microphone over to us?
Sure.
Hang on, Paul, turn your phone a little more.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, thank you. Thanks for having me today. I'll be relatively brief. We have presented some information related to some credit ratios and peer review tied to Moody's Investor Service. So for the group here, all municipalities that issue debt through public issuance, municipal bonds in this example, have to provide for, have a credit rating done by firms that independently review the creditworthiness of your local government, county, state, throughout the country. Those companies provide that information through a process that they do when you issue debt, as well as through an annual surveillance that is traditionally done toward the end of the year or kind of post-budget. So PFM is, what we do as advisors is we take the information that is provided by Moody's Investor Service through their database, and we utilize it to review and look at, to see how we compare to you versus other creditworthy institutions. So this information that we're talking about today is all from Moody's itself and is being presented as a comparison and discussion on how the process works. So, big picture, the county uses Moody's Investor Service as their credit rating agency. They've been using them since about 2019. There are other firms out there that provide credit ratings, including Standard and Poor's and a few others, most traditionally like Commonwealth, it's Moody's and Standard and Poor's. As mentioned, the county has a AA2 credit rating. And what does that mean? Well, looking at the chart below, there's a green down to a red, which ranges between the type of credits that they offer under their rating process. So many of you may have heard the concept of a AAA, that is like having an 800 or more credit score. That is the highest you can be. There are a couple of counties that have that credit rating. And the next range, which is considered very high-grade credit, would fall in the AA2 category. So that is the AA category that this county falls in. You can see that there are others that fall in the A, down to the B double A, and well below, down to the C range. Most municipalities in the Commonwealth probably fall, on average, in the A category. That is traditional what we'll see. So being in the level of the AA2 category obviously provides the county strong interest rates when we issue debt publicly, as well as giving, you know, additional backing for the public to know that things are going, going well here. Wanted to point out that this is the latest credit rating that was completed. The county issued debt a couple years back. This is some information that was included in the credit rating report prepared by Moody's that affirmed the AA2 credit rating. We provided both some information that came from that report that tied to strengths and weaknesses. In some cases, those are things that are driven by financial information, a tax base, fund balances, things like that, as well as information related to population, market values, wealth levels, things like that. Those are the type of things that help drive the credit rating overall. It's not just kind of one number, and here you are. They look at various topics, and when we review that process, we go over those and answer questions related to those. So just pointing out a few of those things, you know, the tax base is 6.3 billion. That puts you within the range nationally in the AA category, which is, which is good. The liquidity position of the county has been strong. Strong reserves fall within the range that falls under this particular ratio and category, as well as modest debt burden. I think that's an important point here. The county in the past has issued, publicly issued debt to fund capital projects. The decisions, as they decide when those projects are being done, mostly are done through either a bond or bank loan transaction traditionally. So given the amount that is outstanding, it falls under the concept of modest debt burden under, under those rules. And the county ultimately has had a, you know, history of strong, strong reserves over the years. So those are the credit strengths that we've seen. Generally speaking, as far as weaknesses in general that is noted. Population is relatively steady, you know, little bump here and there. That is, you know, things that you generally cannot control in and out of the county, but those are a point that is noted here, as well as comparing you to other industrial-type and manufacturing throughout the county. Those are, diversification is something that they consider as well. So those are the type of things that we note and see. The county, as we went through the process, we talked about the economic development that's incurred in the county through its separate corporation that assists with that. As you continue to be doing that, we'll note those changes throughout the county in the next conversations. I wanted to point one thing out, as I mentioned earlier. Although the county's last rating was published in 2020, there is annual surveillances that are, that occur by Moody's as one of their requirements when they are doing that, because they need to make sure that things are being done right, because they can make changes to the credit rating at any time. It doesn't matter if you're issuing debt or not. So there are some, you know, counties that have movements up or down depending on those conversations that occur. One thing to point out, though, is in 2022, in November, about a year ago, Moody's changed their methodology to adjust the local government ratios and changes based on what they believe are most pertinent to today's world. So Moody's provided and reviewed every credit that they issued throughout the whole country and determined that their review secondarily.
Wake up, boots.
There would be, if there'd be any additional.
Mr. Doc, would you please?
Wake up.
Maybe please stop that, we're letting them be, all right, please? Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Karen.
Yes, Moody's did review everyone a second time despite the traditional surveillance in 2022, based on that change in methodology. There was no change needed for, for the county at that time. We expect to probably have a surveillance call in the coming months as well. I just want to point out a couple of numbers, and these are just listed for the county just to give you an idea of where you compare in, in certain areas. If you look at the yellow, green, blue, and red, those are the main methodologies that they consider are most important when reviewing creditworthiness. And that's the economy, financial performance, institutional framework, which is essentially just Pennsylvania governments, and then leverage, which counts with both debt and liquidity and other things that are tied to this. So the county's numbers from 2021, which is the most recent information that Moody's has, or at least listed at the time in the database, is listed on the right-hand side. You can compare each of those with the range that you're following. So not every county is straight AA2 all the way through. They have different ranges, and they take all that information, put it all together, and that's how they determine through the credit process. So you may have some that are a little higher than the AA category, and some you may have below. But again, the overall range is what drives the creditworthiness. In each of those cases, I think they're, they're all in good positions, and, you know, we hope to maintain those things over the course of time.
Hate to say every county's different, right?
That is definitely true, yeah. Obviously, you know, we have Pennsylvania, both on the eastern part of the state and the western part of the state, I think are completely different on how they do things, as well as their demographics. That, you know, suburban Philadelphia area has a different view versus the northern part of the state. But when Moody's looks at things, they have to look at it as a big picture, not just Pennsylvania. They are actually looking at the national AA or single A category, and that's what the comparisons are. So some of these charts that we're talking about here, we're comparing what are called AA2 medians. So you can see these little graphs that are, that I'm gonna touch on briefly. These are the comparisons of every AA2 nationally, not just Pennsylvania. And for anyone that knows local government world throughout the country, Pennsylvania is somewhat unique in the sense that we have many smaller local governments. Frankly, I think the largest percentage of local governments is located in Pennsylvania versus the whole national map, so they're just 10,000. So they're just 10,000 or something like that. Most of them are actually in Pennsylvania. Other states are just large entities. So we are comparing some of those versus some of the others that fall in this AA category. So that data comes all together, gives you the historical averages. So just pointing out a few of those ratios. One thing that's important here is, you know, stability is important here, and that's one of the things that we like to see. You know, in some cases, there's been, you know, some moderate increases or increases over the last three or four years. But you can see the driven averages that are tied to the brown box, which is Skubal County, and then the medians, which is the blue line. So you can see those ranges in percentages as those ratios are calculated. So again, this is just one big math problem, don't want to bore anyone on the calculations. But these are important to point out. These are the type of things that Moody's, an independent company, reviews to make sure that we're falling in line with the categories that they're looking for. I won't go much farther than this. Again, very, very steady. It's really debt adjusted, that pensions, population, again, all very, very normal status falling under the AA category. Again, important points here. Just wanted to really just generally provide everyone an idea of, really, with the process that we go through, it is something that happens. We are constantly on the phone and comparing and adjusting and making sure that we're doing things correctly. And when we communicate these things to the rating agency, the understanding's going on over the year, as well as through their independent review. So I'll stop. I appreciate the time, and thanks.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you to all and the administration team. But also thank you to all the employees, because we have a lot of employees, row officers here, that all have come together to do a very positive thing on behalf of the county. So thank you so much for giving us that review.
Thank you, Jamie. Before we go ahead, I think, I think Jenna St. Clair's here. Sorry, Jenna St. Clair, sorry, Jenna from our Conservation District, and she has a new employee with her today. Do you want to introduce, come get a gentleman here?
Sure, this is Kelsey Brown, our new program coordinator.
Morning, Kelsey, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to the presentation. Okay, next up, we have administrator. First item is approval requested to ratify Disney approved contract for the month of September 2023. Your motion to approve these contracts?
So.
Second? On the question?
Other question? Again, I just want to go back to what we discussed last month. Mr. Bender, these are items that have been paid already. This is just the contract, doesn't need approval of items that you have already paid?
Correct. The board approved these parcels to be included in the program. As a result of that, there was a survey and an appraisal.
Okay. And the only point that I make, you know, we have to pay the bills that we have. However, my concern I have is that one of the parcels is, you know, for the chair of the Board of Commissioners. And even though we have to pay the bill, I'm concerned about it from an ethics standpoint.
That is true, and that was addressed prior at, when they were both approved on the minutes. It's just an extension of that program.
Okay, thank you.
There was a question, and I asked Solicitor Dottie, when that issue came up at first, a number of months ago, does this present as a conflict? And actually, this is, he said, no, it did not, because it's only looking at the approval if you can enter the program. And that's what the survey and the appraisal was. Am I correct on that?
Yes, correct, it's true.
I just want to get clear on that.
That is correct.
Any other questions? Jenna, would you want to make any more comments or not?
Absolutely. Again, I'm Jenna St. Clair.
Thank you, Ma'am.
What's up? Good morning. I'm Jenna St. Clair, the district manager of Skubal Conservation District. We administer the county's farm and preservation program. That is administered through its own board as a separate board of directors. So I want to make some clarifying comments about these contracts for the appraisal. Those, like Commissioner Hess had pointed out, the survey and appraisal are done in order to see that a farm is eligible to enter into the program. All of those costs, though paid for by the county upfront, are reimbursed by the state through the state's farm and preservation program. In addition, easement that would be for the Heatherington farm is also going to be paid for by entirely state funding. So I wanted to clarify how that program works and what funding would be going towards.
Thank you.
So Jenna, so what you're saying to me is that state funding is involved, and that, but who appoints the farmland preservation board? The ag preservation board? The county commissioners do. So again, that's why I believe that there's concern that I have. So, but that's my concern.
The farms that are selected for easement, also, that's done through an established ranking criteria. The largest portion of that ranking depends on the soil that's present in the farm and other factors like that. So we do those rankings annually on every farm that applies. And then obviously, the ones that they go to the top are the ones that are then eligible to go easement with the state.
And my only comment back on that is that, you know, again, I've always supported farmland preservation. We went from zero money going farmland preservation to, when I came on in 2012, of funding farmland preservation. This past year, we increased funding to farmland preservation by close to $200,000, if I'm not mistaken. Okay? And even though I approved of the farmland preservation for those other farms that were eligible, all I asked was the chair to step aside and go on a wait list until that time where he was not in the position. So, and to allow another farm to be able to get those numbers. So that was my concern. It's nothing against the farmland preservation program. I think it's an excellent program, and we have funded that accordingly. So thank you.
For the record, Jenna, I'd like to comment. These five farms that were, including White Farm and Murray Farm, are being done with federal money, federal money and state money. And by allowing us to be in that position, we will actually garner in some extra additional federal money.
Yeah, so we've adopted to start entering into federal easements as well. That has additional restrictions on those properties that are under those easements. And then 50% of the funding that goes into that will come back to us in the following year. So that was a decision made by the preservation board to put priority on easements that were willing to do that federal program in order to continue to leverage more money back into the county program.
And once again, no county money is going into preserving my farm. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments for her?
I have just one question. Is this the first appraisal that was done on that farm versus the second appraisal?
This is additional.
It's an additional appraisal, because that farm would not have been eligible for the federal program unless? Okay, no?
No. So the Heatherington tract and the other one that is.
Which one were you attracted?
An initial appraisal was done, but again, in order to be in that federal program, the appraisal has to be done to the standards of that program, so an additional appraisal had to be done. So.
Did the appraisal go up at all?
I'm not sure what the initial, initial one was.
Okay. My understanding is that the appraisal went up. So that's, again, nothing to do with that. We have a motion, and I appreciate the information you presented, Jenna. And I know we have a motion on board, so thank you.
Once again, that's it. It's not a new appraisal, it has to be.
Yeah.
Which we're required by the USDA. Any other questions or comments?
Just, I just want to clarify again, Mr. Solicitor, that if Mr. Heatherington votes on this, it's not in conflict. Go ahead.
Any other questions or comments? We have a, come here, Linda, we have a.
We have a motion in a second. We have to see a roll call.
Okay, the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovitch?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie, you want to read the next one, please?
Certainly. The approval that Skubal County Board of Commissioners strongly object to the continued operation of the natural soil products company municipal biosolids composting facility in Fairleigh Township until the Gore Biosolids Compostings is amended by the consent decree, consent order and agreement of May 25, 2023, with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. It's operational and proven to be effective in eliminating the existing odor issue, and that the board notify the Department of Exposition, and that the board urged that the department to strictly enforce all laws and regulations and permits governing the conduct of municipal biosolids processing within the Commonwealth to prevent malorders from leaving facility premises, and further request that the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania to adopt such a policy resolution directed to the Department of Environmental Protection. Requesting a motion at this time.
Okay, is there a motion for this?
Start again.
On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovitch?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up. That letter to DDP and the Congress Association of Pennsylvania will be drafted by our office and the assignment of Mr.'s is sent. Next is the Human Resources. Morning, Tony.
Good morning, commissioners, three items. First one, appointment in Human Resources of Jennifer Keatsuck as an office support secretarial at the rate of 14.2805, effective 10/30/23. Also, a Human Resources transfer of Carol Federoff to an office support secretarial position at a rate of 14.2805, effective 11/13/23, coming from Agent Care Manager Two. And in the Solicitor's office, the transfer of David Rice to Assistant County Solicitor at a rate of $75,000, effective 12/1/23, coming from Law Clerk in Court Administration. All these appointments are pending drug test and physical where appropriate, and all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Okay, so under Human Resources, there's an appointment of Jennifer Keatsuck as an Office Support Secretarial at an hourly rate of 14.2805, effective October 30, 2023. And also, transfer of Carol Federoff to Office Support Secretarial, also at the rate of 14.2805. That will be effective November 13, 2023. In the Solicitor's office, transfer of David Rice from the Law Clerk in the courts to be our Assistant County Solicitor. Annual size $35,000. That will be incurred December 1, 2023. Is there a motion for these?
We're only doing the first one under motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Let's get Human Resources, two transfers, an appointment, effective 10/30/23, and also November 13. Is there a motion for those two?
Again, it's just the first one that we're doing online. We're not doing the second one. I'll make a motion for the Human Resources appointment of Jennifer Keatsuck, Office Support Secretarial, effective October 30, 2023.
Start again.
On the question, roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovitch?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Tony, I think you also have a.
I do, I have several other items. Approval of a contract to a company called Crossing Crown in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for a period of three months from November 9 to February 9, 2024. With a three-month extension, the contract is for recruitment, branding, advertisement, website services. There's a one-time cost of $6,500, $2,000 per recruitment video package, and monthly management cost of $2,775. I also have approval of a three-year renewal of the Benestar Retirement Prescription Drug Plan Number 2197. Monthly premium for Plan 2197 will increase from $280.60 to $303.10 per person for the period January 1, 24 through December 31, 26. This relates to a 4.3% increase for plan year 24, and a 0% increase for plan years 25 and 26. Also, approval of the three-year renewal of the Benestar Retirement Prescription Drug Plan 6591. Monthly premium for Plan 6591 will increase from $198.27 to $206.80 per person for the period January 1, 24 through December 31, 2026. This relates to a 4.3% increase for plan year 24, and a 0% increase for plan years 25 and 26. Also, approval to renew the agreement with Benetcon Group to serve as the administrator of the county's health reimbursement account plan at a monthly premium of $4 per employee, split between Benetcon, the county, and the broker as follows. Benetcon, $1.84 per employee per month. The county, $1.36 per employee per month, and the broker, $0.80 per employee per month. That's effective January 1, 24 for a 12-month period, unless terminated by written notice to the other parties within 60 days in advance. And also, approval to renew the agreement with One America for life, accidental death, and dismemberment, AD&amp;D, and long-term disability, LTD, insurance coverages for eligible county employees for the period January 1, 24 through December 31, 25. Life at .178 or $1,000 of coverage. That's a 3% decrease from .185 per $1,000 of coverage. AD&amp;D is .02 per $1,000 of coverage. That's flat from last year. LTD is .3 per $100 or monthly covered payroll. That's a 16.7 decrease from .35 per 100.
Thank you, Tony. Is there a business?
Tony, I just, just one question on the Crossing Crown. I know, and I appreciate the fact that you're looking at it till February 9. Have they looked at if the program is working to extend that out? Have they locked, given you an idea of what it would cost for an annual period of time? I know right now you're just dealing 90 days, and maybe with what they're doing, you can actually do this internally after this is put together. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, I believe the monthly cost would stay the same, and it would depend on whether or not you're asking for additional video work.
Correct, thank you.
Any questions for Tony? Mr. Hess, you have a. Mr. Go ahead.
Do you have a comment on?
No, not that.
I just want to formally welcome Connie Newman to the administrative staff of the Commissioner's office. Connie joined us here, both Linda and I feel that she brings an excellent skill set to the office, and we certainly look forward to working with her here in the next while.
Yeah, welcome Connie. I know Linda's been shouldering a lot of his burden for the last how many months, Linda, since this week?
Years.
I'm sure it's a relief to you to have a second person to work with in the administration, so.
I've got Mary Beth here also.
Oh, yeah, she's back as a part-time.
She's taken on some additional responsibilities.
Right.
It's a good team, I think we've got to do well, so. Any other questions? Mr. Hess, you have.
Yes, I'd like to make a statement and also request at the end of my statement. Actually, you know, a number of years, about a year or so ago, the county entered into a consent decree. And actually, the county has been working very, very hard to follow that consent decree that into, so we don't get into further litigation that the county is already in. It has come to our attention, and again, Commissioner Halkovitch, you are aware of what's in the consent decree and what we're actually requesting under the consent decree, especially in the hours of that you are here in the building, from 8 to 5, which is in the consent decree. Over those times, numerous times, you have stayed inside the building well past those amount of hours. All we're asking is so that the county stays and conform with the consent decree, that we don't further get into litigation, is that we're asking you to consume to them hours, if you would please. Also, a letter, I know from Administrator Bender was sent to you. And again, the letter that also was, that came from, and it was addressed to myself and also Commissioner Heatherington from the Sheriff's Office on the amount of times that you were past those hours. All we're asking is that so we don't go into further litigation, that you would hold yourself to those hours. If not, then we'd have to actually look at some other alternatives to do some things in the thing. All we're doing is ask if you can be agreeable to that. And that's why, the reason since it's been so many times, is why it was brought up in public, that it has to be addressed here. So that, and I want to make sure that this is on the record, that the accounting has tried to do this to make Commissioner Halkovitch aware of those. tried to do this to make Commissioner Alcovich aware of those allegations, that the police to conform to it. So at least it leaves the county out of that side, that we've been trying to do everything that we can possible to what's in that consent decree with the Department of Justice. Thank you.
And I'll respond to that. First of all, are you going to take, make a formal motion of that? Because that is actually taking away my rights as a county commissioner. If I may finish, Mr. Hess?
Go ahead.
If I may finish, that the consent decree is with the county. I voted no, I disagreed with what was in the consent decree. The, not everything in the consent decree, but restrictions. I perform my work as a county commissioner, and, you know, all I was asking for are the same restrictions that you would have being in the courthouse, be the same that I would have as a sitting county commissioner. And when you say extensive time, I've never been in the courthouse after 6 o'clock. In fact, the times I've been in the courthouse is because there have been other employees in the Commissioner's Office that have been in the office with me, as they leave, I leave as well. And so if you want to take, make a formal motion about that, and I did ask Mr. Bender about the letter that was sent to me, and that letter was authorized by you and Commissioner Heatherington, and my understanding is Solicitor's Office, for him to handle versus you handle it. But again, if you feel you need to make a formal motion of that, I continue as a county commissioner, as a sitting county commissioner, and the, unless you are, you know, giving other rights to other people in this office, that should be in the Commissioner's Office, you know, you handle as you see accord.
You have the last on that, that little last verbiage. First of all, it honored the consent decree, I want to claim that it did come before this board, and the vote was taken by a majority of this board to agree with the consent decree and to do whatever actions that we can possibly do. That's all I'm asking, and that's all it was. I'm not instructing anything else. All I said a request, just a pleasantly request, Commissioner.
And it basically, and it basically stated that the items in the consent decree had to be lawful. To restrict me would be not lawful.
Is a request lawful?
You're a predator.
All I'm doing is.
Mr. Doug, please.
All I'm doing is making the request, and that's what I did, so that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that's of record, so that if the Department of Justice comes back, and again, to show that we as a county has done everything we can to conform to that, what we can possibly do. That's all I wanted to clear up. That's it, thank you.
I agree, Mr. Hess, there has been no formal motion needs to be done, because it was brought up to the board, and by majority of the vote, it could be accepted. And three years ago, we said at Solicitor's Office, Mr. Alcovich, you promised us you would be here between 8:00 and 5:00 o'clock, you voluntarily promised that. It's not written down, but eyewitnesses that.
I, I, I agreed to when Attorney General's investigation was being done.
You agreed to?
And, and Mr. Heatherington, I will respectfully disagree with you, that once that, once that review was done, that was what I had asked for. It was just the same thing that I did as far as stepping down from the chair, and the agreement that you had made was that, you know, I should go back to this chair after that review, the Attorney General was done. As you well know, you disagreed to do that, so thank you so much.
What is that? I never agreed to that, charge.
Yes, you do.
You promised us you, we, you would stay on it between 8:00 and 5:00.
I, well, I'm just, uh.
Let me finish now, okay? You always talk over top of me, okay? How about, how about you get in order, okay? Well, you and me, okay?
Yeah, wow, okay.
You done? You promised us, there were no stipulations on the back of it, okay? And I, I never promised to step down as chairman, until this was, had to be done until this investigation was over. This investigation is still going on, there's still lawsuits, there's still civil trial. It's still active, okay? Nothing changed, okay? So you made that promise to us as a group, and you now won't keep it, and that's, I find very troubling, so.
So every civil trial, people should be excluded from this location, is what your point is. I'll make a motion to adjourn on that.
Will we go on the salary board?
I, we didn't get, okay, it's fine. That's fine, that's fine, my apologies.
Can I run the meeting, George, please?
Can we play some circus music here?
This was off one more time.